Good morning. We're going to call this hearing the Committee on Agriculture to review the 2016 agenda for the Commodities Futures Commission will come to order. Good morning and welcome. Today's hearing is held against a bleak black backdrop for many commodity producers, especially in farm country. The past two years have seen a dramatic fall in commodity prices across the board, creating significant operational challenges for producers. It is in uncertain times that futures and other derivatives markets provide their greatest benefit to our producers. These markets allow hedgers to look over time's horizon to see what the collective wisdom of the crowd says about the future. The long-range price forecast by futures markets provide invaluable information to farmers, helping them to decide whether to plant, what to plant, and how to plant. Those same prices are used in crop insurance policies that farmers purchase to protect against risk. Bottom line, the futures markets are instrumental in providing risk management to commodities producers. But for many, managing risk in the market isn't as easy as it once was. Many producers face markets that are more brittle than they used to be, with more volatility and less liquidity than in the past. They also face increased costs to access essential dealing and clearing services. Some smaller market participants have been fired by their brokers because the FCM can no longer afford the regulatory costs of keeping them as clients. For too many end-users, Dodd-Frank has created more complicated and more intrusive and more costly regulatory mandates that force hedgers to choose between paying more to manage their risk or risking more to manage their cash. This is not what Congress intended when it enacted Dodd-Frank. I believe that my colleagues who supported Dodd-Frank believe that end-users, the hedgers for whom risk management markets are an essential business tool, would not be harmed by that regulation, by that legislation. To that end, I want to commend the commissioners for the work they have done to find common ground on reforms to several important regulations that pose needless burdens to end-users. That said, the chairman's work on end-user issues, I don't believe, is done. I'm still deeply concerned with the commission's position limits proposal and the impact the new bona fide hedging restrictions will have on agriculture producers, especially when they are struggling with low commodity prices. The proposed Reg A.T. rule also needs significant more work, significant more work, to narrow its definitions and eliminate the potential impact on smaller market participants that should not be swept up in it. Finally, the CPA in me cannot close without touching on the importance of getting to the bottom of the accounting mess the CFTC finds itself in. First, I want to thank Chairman Massett for the CFTC's responsiveness to our inquiries on this matter. The commission's continued openness will help in this process, but I am troubled by the accounting irregularities. Any mistake is cause for concern, but especially one that goes unnoticed for years. In this case, the failure of the commission's internal accounting systems has led to at least one law being broken. This is clearly unacceptable, and I look forward to hearing a plan from the chairman on how to fix the problem. I want to welcome Chairman Massett back to our committee. Thank you for putting the time into preparing for our hearing today. And with that, I'll turn to the ranking member for any thoughts that he may have.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you Chairman Massett for being with us today. I'm looking forward to hearing more about the commission's efforts to harmonize its rules with foreign regulators, create margin rules as a protection in the uncleared swap markets, address cybersecurity, automated trading, and improve data collection. I would also like to hear the chairman's thoughts on the state of the derivatives markets today, given the fluctuation that we've seen in the markets since the start of the year. The CFT's mission is to protect the integrity of the derivative market, and in turn, the CFTC protects not just our constituents who use these markets, but the economy as a whole. So I look forward to your testimony, Mr. Massett, and Chairman Massett, and I yield back the balance of my time.
Thanks, Ranking Member. I do want to welcome the Honorable Timothy Massett, Chairman of Commodities Futures Trading Commission here in Washington, D.C. Chairman Massett, please begin when you're ready, sir.
Thank you, Chairman Conway, Ranking Member Peterson, and members of the committee. I'm pleased to be back to discuss the CFTC's progress and priorities. I know that the markets we regulate are extremely important to your constituents, not just farmers and ranchers, but businesses of all types that use them to manage risk. We have been working hard to make sure these markets work well for them and to ensure that the problems we saw in the financial crisis don't undermine their ability to use these markets effectively. Over the last year, the CFTC completed most of the rules required by the Dodd-Frank Act. These rules were enacted in response to the global financial crisis, a crisis that cost our country millions of jobs and inflicted pain on millions of American families. We are now making sure those rules work as intended, which includes making adjustments and fine-tuning them where necessary. In particular, we are working to make sure they do not improperly burden the American farmers, ranchers, and businesses who did not cause the crisis. We also remain focused on our traditional responsibilities of surveillance, compliance, and enforcement. I want to thank our hard-working, talented CFTC staff and the constructive engagement of my fellow commissioners, Bowen and Giancarlo. Our progress is due to working together collaboratively. Let me highlight a few recent achievements. First, I'm pleased to note that earlier today, Commissioner Jonathan Hill of the European Commission and I announced a common approach regarding requirements for clearing houses located in the U.S. and Europe. This agreement will ensure that European and U.S. clearing houses can continue to provide clearing services to firms in each other's jurisdictions. It will help ensure that our global derivatives markets remain robust while keeping our financial system as stable and resilient as possible. It is also a significant milestone in our cross-border harmonization efforts. I'd be happy to discuss it in further detail. Second, the commission recently approved a strong rule setting margin requirements for uncleared swaps. Our rule exempts end-users and focuses instead on where the greatest risks exist, that is, between large financial institutions, where the interconnectedness means that one entity's default could trigger further defaults by others. We are also addressing cybersecurity, one of the greatest risks to the orderly operation of our financial system today. The commission unanimously voted to propose rules requiring companies that run the core infrastructure under our jurisdiction to adequately evaluate and protect against the risk of cyber attacks. Also recently, the commission unanimously proposed new safeguards that address the rise in automated and high-frequency trading. Currently, approximately 70% of the trading in the futures market is automated, and our proposal focuses on minimizing the potential for disruptions that can occur from automated trading, such as from fat fingers or untested algorithms. These proposals rely on a principles-based approach that codifies many industry best practices. We have also taken many actions to address the concerns of commercial end-users. For example, we recently eliminated certain reporting and record-keeping requirements for end-users. We have made it easier for commercial firms to use certain type, certain traditional types of commodity contracts. And we have made it easier recently for our small banks and community development institutions to continue to use these markets without being subject to new regulations aimed at much larger institutions. The CFTC is also continuing to engage in robust enforcement in order to maintain the integrity of our markets and protect the public against fraud. We are focused on new, complex forms of manipulation and spoofing that use automated trading strategies, as well as conventional frauds, such as precious metal scams aimed at retirees. Surveillance is an equally critical function, particularly given the growth and range of products under our jurisdiction. To be successful in both surveillance and enforcement, we must be able to keep up with the technological transformations in these markets. We must be able to continually receive, load, and analyze large volumes of data. This requires a massive information technology investment, sophisticated analytical tools, and experienced professionals to identify problems. Our priorities in the months ahead include finalizing our proposal, proposed rules to address cybersecurity and automated trading concerns. We will continue to focus on the strength and resiliency of clearing houses and take steps to improve the new framework for trading of swaps. We are also working to finalize important rules related to position limits to address the risk of excessive speculation while making sure participants can engage in bona fide hedging. Let me also note, Mr. Chairman, since you raised it, we are moving to address the lease accounting issues that you raised, and I'm happy to talk about those. Mr. Chairman, I appreciate your support for many of the actions we have taken, particularly those to address end-user concerns, and I look forward to working with you, this committee, and with Congress on reauthorization and other matters in the coming year. Thank you again for inviting me today.
All right. Thank you, Chairman. Appreciate that opening statement. Chair, remind members that they will be recognized for questioning in order of seniority for members who were here at the start of the hearing. After that, members will be recognized in order of arrival, and I appreciate members' understanding. With that, I recognize myself for five minutes. Again, Chairman, thank you for being here. This has been a bad year for agriculture. We've had a century kind of long drop in prices over the last two years, 55% reduction in farm income. Can you tell us what your staff at the CFT is doing to help understand the full weight and the full cost of its regulations on this agriculture community? And by this, I don't mean just the direct cost, but also reduced services, decreased liquidity, fewer FCMs, the full gamut of our folks trying to access these tools for risk management in the face of pretty daunting challenges that they face.
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. Well, these have been challenging times. We have seen a lot of volatility, as well as decline in prices. And obviously, we don't have an effect on prices, but to answer your question, we are certainly very conscious of making sure that the businesses that need these markets, and in particular, smaller businesses and farmers and ranchers, can continue to use these markets effectively to hedge their routine risk. And that's why we've addressed many of what I've called these end-user concerns. We've taken steps to reduce record-keeping requirements. For example, we recently amended our Regulation 1.35 to reduce record-keeping requirements. We've focused on the residual interest rule and changed that, which went to when customers must post margin, so that's not too onerous. We've reduced reporting requirements, and we've got a proposal on the table right now that concerns trade options, to make sure businesses can continue to use trade options. You raised the question on clearing members. I'm very concerned about the robustness of the clearing member industry. We want to make sure we still have a very robust clearing member industry, that market participants can still access these markets. So I've spoken out about this and happy to discuss some of those issues. Let me also note that I noted that we've announced this agreement with Europe on transatlantic CCPs. And throughout this process, I've been very focused on making sure that whatever agreement we reached did not raise costs unnecessarily in our markets. And that's where we landed. At the end of the day, for example, there won't be any change to customer margins, and in fact, we excluded agricultural contracts from even the changes that apply to what we call house margin.
I understand, Timothy, the record, all those things that you've done are great if I can get into the market. But if I no longer have access to the market because the overall regulatory burden on the FCMs, on these other institutions, and the capital requirements, everything else that's happening, they basically excluded me because they can't make money on my trades. How does that, how does that help me stay in the, access these markets if this overall burden on the folks that I try to go to have pushed them to a point where they can't, they can't service my account?
Well, I think there are a number of factors influencing the clearing member industry. For example, if you look at the, people have talked about the decline in clearing members, that goes way back. That's been a 10-year trend, predates Dodd-Frank. And it has to do with just the challenges of this business, particularly in a low-interest rate environment. I don't think in particular-
But is there sensitivity to, I got that. Is there sensitivity to the impact that the regulatory schemes have on making that environment even more challenging?
Absolutely. And I've talked about this publicly with, you raised the capital requirements issue. A key thing there for clearing members is the effect of the supplementary leverage ratio on clearing. And I've spoken out about this. This is, of course, a regulation of the bank regulators, but I do think it's not properly measuring the exposure of clearing members, and therefore, it's having a potentially very adverse effect on clearing. And that's, that's the reason we're hearing that clearing members are dropping customers. I've had meetings with clearing members. They say, you know, your customer protection regulations, for example, that came out after Dodd-Frank, those were a very good thing. We're all for those. What they're really focused on is the SLR.
Right. Can you, real quickly, on the leasing issue, if you've got Anti-Difficiency Act violations, will you report those on a timely basis?
Absolutely.
There may be some other members who want to go into the overall impact that that has. But again, thank you for being here. With that, I'll recognize and recommend for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Could you expand a little bit on the agreement you have with the Europeans on clearing houses?
Certainly, certainly. So this agreement will resolve the issues pertaining to whether Europe would recognize our CCPs and therefore, which is necessary for European firms to continue to do business on U.S. CCPs. And we went through a very detailed analysis comparing our regimes. I, of course, have spoken out a lot about this. I thought there was an ample basis for them to recognize us a long time ago. They wanted to use this as an opportunity to look at ways to harmonize our regimes a little bit. And so we've agreed on a few steps. And like any agreement, it's a good compromise. Each of us will take some actions. On the customer margin practices, in other words, the practices of our CCPs when it comes to what they charge customers, those essentially won't change. We showed Europe, they were first concerned that their system might produce more margin. We showed that actually ours generally produces more customer margin to the CCP than theirs, and they're considering allowing their CCPs to move toward ours in that respect. On the house side, in other words, the clearing members' proprietary accounts and positions, they have a slightly higher standard with respect to one key element of setting those margins than we do. And our CCPs that want recognition will need to show that they're collecting sufficient margin that's comparable to what they would under the European standard. There's some other aspects to the deal. We've agreed to propose to the full commission what we call which is simply recognizing that European firms can comply with our rules in many respects by showing that they comply with the comparable European requirements. This is a very good step forward. It's something we've done in other areas already. And as I said, we've accepted agricultural contracts from some of the conditions, from the conditions that our CCPs need to meet with respect to house margining practices. And that's because these contracts really don't involve international competition. They're very focused on the U.S. market. And that was important to us, again, because I wanted to make sure this deal did not, you know, result in higher costs, particularly for some of our smaller customers in these markets.
So the stuff I've been reading about these clearinghouses not being able to clear in one country, all that stuff's going to go away?
Yep. We should be able to implement this on a timely basis. I think market participants can continue to clear with confidence. I've gotten assurances from the European Commission and from ESMA that they're prepared to implement this on a timely basis. And I know our CCPs have to do certain things to do that, but I know they're ready to do that also.
So this Office of Financial Research of the Treasury report about the increased systemic risk caused by moving the swaps into the clearing, into central clearing. You know, when we did it, you know, we understood that we were potentially moving this risk to the clearinghouse, you know, that they screw something up, it could put the clearinghouse at risk. Is that what they're talking about here?
Well, that's essentially what they're talking about, but I don't, I think even the OFR would say, I know Dick Burner, the director, would agree, that the steps we took to move certain types of contracts onto central clearing were good steps. That made sense, because we can much better monitor and mitigate that risk. Having done that, though, we simply have to engage in increased vigilance over these CCPs, make sure they're always strong and resilient, and that's what we've been doing. We've overhauled our regulations in this respect. We've strengthened transparency. We've strengthened customer protection. And we're working with other regulators around the world, not just domestically, but around the world, on these issues of CCP resiliency.
So do they think that you haven't done enough there to?
No, I think they're just raising it because they agree it's an important issue, and they want to help, and they've offered our help, and we appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Chairman, you goes back, Mr. Lucas for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman Massad, so I'm very pleased with both your statement this morning and your pronouncement about the equivalency and the assurances you've given us now. That's a big step in the right direction. My understanding was if we had not been able to achieve this, potentially, the 21st of February might have been a key date when we were cut off in effect. You expanded on the things that we have come to an agreement with. Are there still areas where perhaps there's a disparate perspective between us and your European colleagues?
No, I don't believe so, Congressman, not on the question of this whole equivalence and recognition process. You know, and truthfully, it took a lot longer than I thought it would or should. Frankly, I thought we'd be able to announce this a lot sooner, but sometimes it just does, as you well know. But I'm glad we got here, and again, I think market participants can continue to clear with confidence.
Changing topics briefly, Mr. Chairman. One of the advantages of the dynamic leadership of the committee in the 114th session of Congress is, in addition to two good Aggies leading the place, you know, both are CPAs. So we probably have a better focus on the financial details than maybe any committee in recent times on the Ag Committee. Could you discuss with us for a moment this topic about leasing issues and your facilities in New York City and the IG's comments and the cost and all that kind of thing? Could you expand for just a moment on that situation?
Sure.
And I realize that the leases were done prior to your tenure as chairman, as I understand it.
Yes, absolutely, Congressman. So the issue on accounting for leases is this. When the agency first entered into multi-year office leases, which goes way back to 1994, it accounted and obligated the current year payments, the first year payments, in its financials, and obligated that amount, and it disclosed all the future payments every single year in a footnote to its financials. It continued to follow that practice for years. That practice was signed off on by various accounting firms, including KPMG, one of the prominent accounting firms. The GAO started looking at some things last fall and said, "We have some questions." We promptly looked into their questions. We worked with them, and they concluded that, no, what you should have done when you enter a multi-year lease is you should obligate the entire amount, all those future-year payments. If it's a 10-year lease, you take the sum of those 10-year payments, and you have to obligate that amount in the first year, and you have to account for that amount, not just in a footnote, but on the financial statements itself. And once they said that, we said, "Okay, well, we'll work to fix it." We notified our auditors, as well as the Inspector General, who also had signed off on this practice, hadn't noticed any problem. And we came to Congress when GAO first raised this. So that's where we are. As I say, we'll work with GAO and OMB to address this. I want to fix it. It's important that we be fully in compliance. But let me say, this was not an issue of the facts not being known. The facts about our leases and our lease payments were fully disclosed in the footnote. It's not an issue about failing, about having an internal system that didn't keep track. We knew what the lease costs were. We knew what the lease terms were, and all that was provided, again, to our outside auditors. It was, however, an incorrect practice with respect to both accounting and federal appropriations law obligation practice.
Is it fair to say, I think there was some point in the report where it noted, perhaps even the circumstance, where there are a couple rooms in the lease that management wasn't aware that were part of the lease, those kind of things have been addressed?
Okay, that is a separate issue, where the IG has looked at whether we have excess space. And let me say on that, when I first took office, within about two weeks, I went to Kansas City and looked at our office space, and it was clear to me we did have excess space, and we immediately contacted the landlord and offered it back. We have a limitation. We cannot just sublease on our own to, you know, anybody. We can't do that. So we have to go to the landlord. So we did that in Kansas City, and we've done that in New York as well. Our overall lease occupancy is about 85%, but we'll certainly work to try to get the landlord, we are working to try to get the landlord to take back the office space. I think we do have some disagreements with the IG on the calculation. I think the IG felt there were certain rooms we could use that we didn't felt we could really use. But, you know, we're certainly working to, to the extent that we can give back any space, we're happy to do it.
Just remember, Chairman, my CPA friends are watching. Thank you. You go back, Mr. Chairman.
Chairman, you goes back, Mr. Scott for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Massad, good to have you with us. First of all, I want to share with you some concerns I have with the possibility of lowering the demand in this level. First of all, I think it could have some damaging consequences if we lower that. One, I think it would limit our bank's ability to provide good risk management solutions for bank customers. And the other thing that I think it would do is it would raise the cost of providing the hedges that are so important for risk management as well. So my question to you is, in view of my concerns, you will not lower that level from $8 billion?
So, thank you for the question, Congressman. Here's what we've done on that. I asked our staff to do a study of the effect of lowering that level. As you know, the way the rule was written back when the SEC and the CFTC drafted this rule several years ago was they set it at $8 billion initially and provided that it would automatically fall to $3 billion at the end of 2017. I asked our staff to do a study of that. Now that we have some data, the agencies didn't really have any data when they first wrote the rule. We hadn't, you know, no one had data on the swap market. Now we have some data. So we put out a preliminary study that looked at what the effects would be as best we could. We've gotten some comment on that study, a lot of good public comment. We're evaluating those comments. We're going to finalize the report. And then that will put the commission in a place that will have the facts and the analysis where we can decide whether to take action and what action to take. So we're trying to do this all on a timetable that works in light of the timetable of the regulation as it's written today.
Well, I want to register my deep concern and urge you not to lower it. Because from my own calculations, I think it would have a devastating effect on our bank's ability to be able to help their customers hedge and on their ability to be able to affect good risk management. That's the whole purpose of it. And if the banks are having that, I think that we need to listen to their concerns. So I would be very pleased if you would keep me appraised. And I have some information as well that I could share with you where it would be a devastating impact.
Fine, Congressman.
Thank you.
Be happy to keep you appraised and look forward to whatever information you want to give us.
Now, yeah, as you know, over in financial services, when we last talked, I serve in financial services too, I spoke to you about the deep concerns we had about the failure of the European Union to give us fair harmonization and equivalency. First, we, I mean, this didn't just start, it started way last year in the spring, in the summer. It's been kicked down the road. We still didn't have equivalency. We set the date for December, still didn't have it. And now you're coming to us and saying that you have it and you're satisfied. And I don't question that, but I'm wondering, why did they put the United States clearinghouses and exchanges through this doubt that, in effect, really, when you raise doubt and you have a period of time where that doubt is registered in a very competitive world market? My point is, was there any damage done because of their failure to take so long? So I want to answer, why'd they do it in the first place when they knew we had the equivalency? They went ahead and they gave the equivalency and harmonization to Singapore and other areas that had our same rigid regimes. And then I want to know, did it cause any damage to our competitiveness for our United States businesses in dealing with crossboard?
I don't think it caused any damage to our competitiveness or the strength of our CCPs. Probably took a few years' life off of some of my staff who had to, you know, negotiate this over a long time. But, look, I, you know, I, as I've said, I think it should have happened a lot sooner. I think there was always an ample basis for them finding us equivalent. But I think the difference was this versus how they looked at Singapore, or Korea, or India, or the many other places where they've granted equivalence. They looked at this as an opportunity to say, "We really need to try to harmonize regulation of CCPs between the U.S. and Europe," so that we don't have a situation where there's a possibility for risk arbitrage by businesses and movement and so forth. And that's an admirable objective. I think we all want to try to harmonize regulation. So they really wanted to use the process to do that. And we've succeeded at that. We've reached an agreement, and we'll go forward and get it done on time.
All right. Very quickly, we just passed the omnibus bill, and I've been very, very hardworking to try to make sure you all have the proper funding that you needed. But in this omnibus bill, you were flat-funded. Tell us where you are with that. Do you have enough funds moving forward, and how damaging was the flat-footing?
Well, it's very challenging. It's very difficult. Our costs increase over time, so, you know, we must manage hiring. But, you know, this agency, to my mind, just does not have the budget commensurate with its responsibilities, given that those responsibilities were dramatically expanded, really dramatically expanded by the Dodd-Frank Act. We were given responsibility for this entire new market, the over-the-counter swaps market. And plus, I think, as many of you know, the traditional markets we've overseen, the futures and option markets, have grown tremendously, not just in size, but in complexity and numbers of products. So that's our challenge. I'd be happy to discuss it in more detail.
All right. Thank you. I apologize for going over time, and I appreciate your concern.
The reason I allowed that is I thought you were just following up on the first question, not going down an entirely new line, so David had to whack on you a little bit there.
My apologies, sir.
Mr. Pete for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman Massad, just picking up where Mr. Lucas left off, I believe you said that it was an incorrect practice, the accounting on some of the leases that are the subject of the news and our dialogue here this morning. And since I'm not one of the CPAs here, was it an incorrect accounting practice then that you were referring to?
Yes, I think it was both an incorrect practice in terms of the amount that should have been obligated under federal law, as well as, therefore, an incorrect accounting. That's how I understand. I'm not an accountant either, but that's how I understand it, both incorrect as to federal appropriations law and accounting.
The federal appropriations law, can you stipulate what law that might be?
The specific law, I'm sorry.
Anti-Deficiency Act?
Well, certainly, the Anti-Deficiency Act is involved, but I think there may be a separate law as to what amount you obligate. But the issue was, as I say, the fact that when we entered a multi-year lease, the view was, just given the nature of our authority, we had the authority to enter into multi-year leases. And obviously, by entering into a multi-year lease, you can get a better deal for the taxpayer. It's pretty hard if you got to enter into a one-year lease for 600 people, you're not going to get, you know, a very good deal. But when we entered into a multi-year lease, we should have obligated the full amount, those full 10 years of payments.
Regardless of the accounting practice involved there, I would just go back to the Anti-Deficiency Act then, and which prohibits the obligation of funds that have not yet been appropriated.
Right.
And that's what we're really talking about, isn't it?
Well, I think had we tried to obligate the full amount, you know, I guess, yeah, we would not have had the budget if we were going to both have an office and employees, as I understand it. You couldn't have had both.
Right. And so I just wanted to get to that. And I know that I want to put you in this position, but I'm trying to determine this, and that is that how pervasive is this practice in the broader federal government? And I know that's not a question you can legitimately answer here this morning, but I'm asking you this question this way so that I can continue on with that, and that is, I'll just say, as I interpret what I've heard here today, however inadvertent it might have been, it is, at least temporarily, a violation of the Anti-Deficiency Act, which you will correct, working with the GAO and the OMB. Is that fair?
Yes. And I couldn't comment on how pervasive it is, Congressman. I don't know the answer to that.
But you would concede that it appears that this is a violation of the Anti-
Well, I'll leave it to the lawyers on that, but my understanding is it likely is, you know.
And that is mine. And I take it to this point for that purpose, that I think we have a broader responsibility in government to go back to the Anti-Deficiency Act and apply it in places beyond just in your operation, but in the entire government. And so I take the opportunity to make that point here in this hearing, and I'm glad this hearing's taken place for that reason. And then, so moving on from that topic, and I thank you for that response, I go back to Dodd-Frank, is the, you're making sure that all the rules work and your customer protection requirements that came out after Dodd-Frank, you're relatively satisfied with what you've been able to put together in fine-tuning the rules?
Well, we're still working on it. There's still some fine-tuning we need to do. One of the things we're going to be taking up this spring is our rules on trading of swaps. I think there's a number of things that we'd like to look at there that need to be changed. There's other issues, too. I think with this whole structure, it's very challenging to implement a whole new regulatory framework for an industry that is already a global industry that hasn't been regulated.
Let me pose this question another way. If Dodd-Frank had never been passed and signed into law, or if it were repealed in its entirety, what would you speculate would be the implications in your area of influence?
Well, Congressman, I think the steps we've taken through Dodd-Frank are excellent steps, and I think they reflect, obviously, the commitments of all the leaders of all the G20 nations to take the very same steps. We saw in the crisis how excessive risk could develop in this market, and it contributed to the intensity of the crisis. Now, there are a lot of derivatives that we all know are used by commercial businesses to hedge routine risk that are very important, and we want to make sure they can continue to do that. But we needed to take steps to put in a framework for this market where we're clearing standardized swaps, because that helps monitor and mitigate the risk, where we're- swaps, because that helps monitor and mitigate the risk, where we're having oversight of the major players in this market and requiring them to do things like have capital and margin and so forth. So, I think all those steps are good. It's just, it will take time to get it, you know, exactly right.
I thank you, and I'd summarize this, just international conformity is one of the things that you mentioned, and, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the hearing, and I yield back the balance of my time. Thank you.
Chairman's time expired. Ms. Plaskett for five minutes.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you so much for being here this morning. I wanted to just quickly ask you, and then move on to something else, a question about the leasing. When there was some discussion earlier about that, do you think that, I know that the SEC had the same problem several years ago, is this something that maybe if you, GSA had taken over, or using GSA would be more helpful to you, so that you could move on to some other administrative?
Yeah.
And the day-to-day operations?
Well, thank you, thank you for the question, Congresswoman. It's a very good question, and obviously, there is a difference if an agency goes through GSA. You know, in our case, when I took office, all I can speak of is really my experience since taking office. And when I took office, we already had leases in place in all the, in all the offices. None of them actually are due to expire for another, I don't know, five years, so when I took office, it was even longer than that. However, I did sit down, shortly after I took office, I sat down with the head of the GSA, because I recognized that we did have some excess space, and I wondered if they could help us with that. And we actually talked about whether it would even make sense for GSA to take over our leasing, and he pointed out, well, since you don't have anything coming up, you know, you don't have any renewals, you'd have to pay us, I'd have to pay GSA 7%,
Exactly.
Really, for not much benefit.
So, it's only if there would be negotiating the contract leases that you could see any benefit to that?
I, I think so, but, you know, we didn't explore it fully, but he was, you know, very helpful anyway.
Okay. Thank you. And then, my other question, moving to a completely different topic, would be in terms of market reform, and particularly in Asia. Where do you see them going in terms of market reform and the competitiveness that we have with the Asian market and commodities? And between Europe, our own market, and Asia, where do you find us and the others on that spectrum?
Yeah. Excellent question, Congresswoman, and I've been, I've been very focused on what's going on in Asia. Last year, I made a trip out there, I've tried to develop good relationships with the regulators throughout that part of the world, China, Japan, Hong Kong, Singapore in particular, Korea, and we're continuing to do that. They, you know, agreed to the G20 reform principles, they are implementing those. Clearing, the clearing requirements have taken effect in many jurisdictions. Japan is probably furthest along in terms of implementing some of the other reforms. You know, the US really was able to implement these reforms much faster than anywhere else in the world, so other jurisdictions are still coming along. The markets in Asia, you know, are not quite as developed as ours, certainly maybe leaving out Japan, but when you look at China, it's a huge market for derivatives, particularly commodities, but it's not as developed in terms of being a market where businesses hedge risk. It's much, it's a much more retail speculative market. But, we've been trying to build relations there and work with them on harmonizing reforms. So, I guess the, the short answer is, there's a lot of work to do here, but I think there is a willingness over there to, to work together, and I hope that we can do that so that they do implement, you know, similar reforms and we can harmonize.
So, the lack of harmonization, does that create a competitive edge for them or for us, or is it something that you don't see?
I, I don't, I don't think it is today, because again, I don't think there's a, there's a serious issue there, and I think there are other differences in the markets. But, I think over time, we do want to make sure that we, you know, achieve some basic regulatory harmonization on a lot of these key points. And I think there's a lot of good work going on to do that. The margin rule on uncleared swaps is a great example, where there, there are international standards that a lot of countries participated in drafting. And I worked very hard to make sure our rule was consistent with those, so that we do further this process of, of international harmonization.
I've run out of time, but at some point, it would be great if the Chairman could have you explain why this margin you feel is so important in the uncleared swaps area. Thank you.
Chairman's time is back. Thank you. Mr. Scott for five minutes.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Assad, good to see you again.
Good to see you.
I want you to know, I share the Chairman's opinion that until there is a reauthorization, that there should be no increase in funding for the agency. That would be for any agency, quite honestly. If it hasn't been reauthorized, I, I don't think we should increase funding, but certainly holds for yours as well. I can't help but wonder, as a small business owner, who was licensed with a Series 7, who, somebody on someone's staff that worked for someone like you, thought that I should document every lunch that I had with a client. I should document where we ate, what the address of that lunch was, and what I spent with that client at lunch. And I can't help but wonder what would happen if a government regulator came through the doors of my business and asked for the records of where I had lunch, how much my fine would be if I wasn't able to produce each and every document for them. I, I heard what, I heard what you said, but the fact of the matter is, a legal liability was not properly documented, and your records are incomplete. And as a private business owner, I know what would happen to me if I hadn't done those same things, whether, I, I trust you when you say it wasn't intentional. But, what would happen to an entity regulated by your agency if that entity was not recording data in a, in a timely fashion or retaining complete document sets? What would the fine be? What would the penalty be?
Congressman, I guess I would say it this way. Our compliance efforts are directed, and I say this to the staff all the time, are directed toward bringing people into compliance. They're not directed at playing gotcha games, and the same is true for our, with respect to our enforcement. We're not focused on small businesses who don't document a lunch. I'm not even aware that our requirements require that. We're focused on Ponzi schemes and precious metal scams and spoofing, and people who are deliberately manipulating the markets.
And I absolutely support you being in those things, and I think that in order for our markets to work, you have to have access and you have to have integrity. The, the problem is, when you draft the rules and regulations in such a manner that it encompasses everybody out there, then it becomes a problem, and it puts the smaller people out of business.
And I-
Let me make one final statement on that, if I could, with regard to Dodd-Frank. The idea that you would put my local community bank, where there's absolutely no systemic risk to the US economy if that bank failed, under the same rules and regulations that you would put a multi-billion dollar institution, I think is a perfect example of the flaw of the original legislation, and my, my fear is that if the agent, that the agencies are going to push forward and continue to put the little, the little person under the, under the same rules and regulations as the big person, and therefore, putting the little guy out of business.
Well, Congressman, I, I share your concern. It's certainly not my desire, and I think we've taken a lot of steps to make sure we're not doing that. As I noted, you know, recently, we, we took, we took an action to make sure that small banks and community development financial institutions, who weren't specifically addressed in the statute, could continue to engage in their very limited derivatives business the way they had been and not be subject to-
And I recognize that most of them are not engaged actively, but, but as a whole, the rules and regulations that were drafted for the multi-billion dollar institutions have come down on your local community bank, and, and it's caused problems, especially for our farmers and others like myself who go to the community bank, because that's who we choose to go to and want to go to. I, I have 30 seconds left. I would, I would suggest to you that with regard to the rules of automated, automated trading, which is, it's not something that, I'll admit, I don't understand it completely, but I do believe that that is intellectual property that belongs to people, and I do believe that they have a, a right to privacy. If you have, if you have probable cause of wrongdoing, then I absolutely think that you should go get a warrant to get access to that intellectual property. But, I can't see the government being trusted to safeguard and house people's intellectual property.
And, and Congressman, I, we're not asking to do that. We're not seeking that power. We're not asking them to, to give us their, what they call their source code. All we're asking is that they preserve it. That's all we're trying to do, so that if there is a problem and we do need to go get it, using the proper procedures, we can. I think there's been some misunderstanding about what our intention was, and we're certainly open to making sure the final rule works that way. If I can, just take a minute more on the record-keeping. You know, we did just revise a very important record-keeping rule in response to the concerns of a lot of commercial businesses that said they felt it was subject to an interpretation such that they did have to keep records that they didn't feel were necessary, and we changed it. That was called 135. And the same on the small banks, you know, we have taken steps, such as the swap dealer rule doesn't require registration by them, they're exempted from a lot of other requirements, so I'll continue to work with you on this.
My time is expired, but there is a difference in the standard for private business owners and the government, and the people who make the rules should abide by the rules.
Chairman's time is expired. Ms. Adams, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Chairman Assad, for your testimony and for the work that you and the other commissioners have done in developing and finalizing and implementing many important rulemaking guidance in, in the wake of Dodd-Frank, particularly as it relates to harmonizing rulemaking on central clearing. Let me ask, with today's announcement, and it's sort of a follow-up, of an agreement on equivalence for clearinghouses with the European Union, can you give a breakdown of how this agreement may impact the Asian markets and their ability to follow suit in working with us on harmonizing rulemaking? Specifically, what, what impact today's rulemaking will have on the Asian markets to catch up?
That's an excellent question, Congresswoman, and I think, you know, a lot of the people in Asia had, have been waiting for Europe and the US to reach agreement, so that then they could see what that agreement is and maybe then think about their own rules. And we've got a separate process going on to look at just that. We have a separate process that involves not just the US and Europe, but regulators from around the world looking at clearinghouse regulation issues, and whether we should try to make the standards more granular, whether we can, need to harmonize in certain areas, and the Asians are involved in that. So, I think the main effect of this is everybody will say, finally, it's finally done, now we know, and now let's move forward, you know, through the international work stream to look at some of these issues further and to try to achieve further harmonization globally.
Thank you. There've been heightened levels of discussions around the issue of stress tests for clearinghouses. Do you think that test, stress tests for clearinghouses are necessary to mitigate the concern for the concentration of risk on a clearinghouse?
That's an excellent question, and yes, I, I think it's very important, and again, this international group that I referred to, that's one of the things they're looking at. Can we develop some standards for stress tests of clearinghouses? Clearinghouses are different. They don't, you know, they, they clear different products, they have different structures. So, there's not a one-size-fits-all, but I think it is important to try to develop some standards. We're co-chairing this international effort to look at things like stress tests and margin methodologies and recovery plans and capital or skin in the game. So, there will be a report coming out by about the middle of the year on this.
Okay. One, one last question. One major area of concern identified in the 2015 OFR report is the risk of a contagion from a failing swap dealer or major swap participant. So, how is the CFTC monitoring or working to relieve that risk or the concern for that contagion risk?
Well, that's where this rule on margin for uncleared swaps is so important. You know, what we've done is we've said, you have to clear on these central clearinghouses or CCPs, the standardized products, but then you've still got a lot of products that aren't going to be cleared and shouldn't be cleared. We shouldn't be trying to move everything into the clearinghouses, because that will just potentially put too much stress on the clearinghouses. So, you're still going to have large institutions engaging in swaps bilaterally, and the margin rule says, you've got to hold some margin for that collateral, in case the other guy defaults. We have a rule in place now, we made it consistent with what the bank regulators are doing in this area, because they have responsibility too for this issue. We made it consistent with what international regulators are doing, so that's why I refer to this as a very important sort of piece of the overall architecture here.
Thank you very much. I'm Mr. Chair, I yield back.
Chairman's time is back. Mr. Crawford, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your testimony, you said one of the reasons swap data is disorganized is because the Commission, quote, "expected the industry to develop standardized terms." Unfortunately, that didn't happen, end quote. However, in the 2012 Swap Data Reporting Rule, it states unequivocally, "The Commission has determined that the final rule will delegate the Chief Information Officer the authority to determine the format, data standards, and electronic transmission standards and procedures acceptable to the Commission. Other than the December technical standards release, what specific steps has the CIO undertaken to provide appropriate data standards to market participants?"
Excellent question, Congressman. We've recently come out with some proposals suggesting some standardized ways of reporting. Covers about 120 fields, and prior to that time, we had engaged, had a lot of meetings with industry to, to sort of develop these ideas. Let me just say that, because an article about what I said quoted, or had a headline that said I was blaming the industry, I'm not blaming the industry. I think this is a challenging problem, and it's just something that's just going to take time and, and we have to work together. I want to work with industry to figure out what the best way is of doing this. I think, you know, I wasn't around when the agency first drafted the rules. I think they didn't really have the data then, and I think they, they put out rules thinking that, that the agent, that the industry might come up with standardized measures. The industry has done that in a lot of areas. I used to, you know, I used to be a lawyer in the private practice. I worked with a whole industry group that came up with a whole set of definitions originally in, in the swap area. But, the issues today, you know, there are things like, if you're, if you've got a swap that pertains to a physical commodity even, like corn or whatever, there's maybe 10 different ways basic fields are getting reported. It's, it's a simple problem on the one hand, but when you're talking about millions of swaps, it becomes a very complicated problem. That's what we're trying to standardize.
Gotcha. Let's talk about the data problem that you highlighted in your testimony. It's been known about for years, and it's been highlighted repeatedly before this committee by multiple witnesses, including then-Commissioner Scott O'Malley. So, providing regulators with a complete picture of the market was one of the most important goals of the G20, and it's been loudly trumpeted as one of Dodd-Frank's biggest safeguards against another financial catastrophe. Given the importance of data reporting, why hasn't this issue been a bigger priority at the Commission?
Oh, I, Congressman, excellent question. It's been a big priority, it's just all a question of resources and how quickly can you do all these things? All these things are big priorities. Fine-tuning the rules so that they don't burden commercial end-users is a big priority. Making sure we're addressing cybersecurity is a big priority. All these things are. But, we're, you know, let me just say that while there are issues in getting the data to a better state, we're benefiting very, very significantly from this data already. The, the study on the de minimis rule is a great example of that.
Let me, let me ask you this, you know, probably more important than who's to blame for the swap data problem is what's the magnitude of the problem. So, my question to you is, if we had a financial crisis today, what could the CFTC tell us tomorrow morning about total counterparty exposure for major US financial institutions?
We can tell you a lot. I, I get reports on who are the largest participants in the swap market, what that exposure consists of in terms of whether it's cleared or uncleared, what asset class it's in. We're increasingly able to look at interconnectedness, so we, we're able to do a lot, but there's a lot more we should do. We're trying, for example, to build out our surveillance system, which is very sophisticated when it comes to the futures market, because we built that out over time. We look at, you know, concentration risk, liquidity risk, credit risk, market risk for all these participants. We're trying now to incorporate their swap activity into that, whether, even if it's uncleared. So, there's a lot we can tell you today, but there's still a lot of work we need to do.
So, you don't have any concerns that the global regulators don't have a full picture of the markets as the G20 intended?
Well, I think the, the words "full picture," I guess, you know, we're, we're getting there. There's always ways you can improve the picture. It's a, it's a very, very, you know, the way I liken this to, it's like a big infrastructure project, you know? It wasn't just write a rule, flip a switch, and suddenly you'll know exactly what this market looks like. You've got to build this out, and I remind our- You've got to build this out, and I remind our staff, you know, let's, we've got to build it out over time, so, you know, let's think about the milestones we're trying to achieve. We can't build the Rolls-Royce tomorrow.
What's the timeline for building that out?
It's a gradual process. You know, I'm hoping we can, I'm very focused on what can we accomplish this year. And as I say, we've put out a specification on harmonizing 120 fields. We've put out rule changes on reporting of cleared swaps. We're working, right now, this very minute, we are chairing a data harmonization effort that brings together international regulators as well as industry participants. We've got about, I spoke to them yesterday, it's a three-day meeting where we're talking about a lot of these issues, and we're bringing, again, bringing together regulators and businesses from around the world to do this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Chairman's time has expired. Ms. Graham for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I represent North Florida, very rural, a lot of agriculture, so I'm so proud to sit on this committee. I just finished a tour, the first annual North Florida farm tour of all 14 counties in my district, and talked with farmers and folks about the challenges they're facing, which are unfortunately quite a lot, and low commodity prices came up regularly. So within the markets that you regulate, can you give some counsel advice as to what steps farmers in my district and across the country can be taking to address and to deal with low commodity prices?
Well, you know, the derivatives markets, in my mind, really exist to help farmers, ranchers, commercial businesses to hedge price risk. Prices are going to be volatile, and we don't control them. They're going to go up and they're going to go down, and we are experiencing that in a lot of commodity areas, obviously not just agriculture. We're seeing, obviously, that in the whole energy complex with what's happened with oil. And so I think our job is to make sure these markets are accessible. I think the questions that were asked by the chairman and others on clearing members and whether people have access to clearing members is critical. Our job is to make sure they can execute, you know, efficiently. Our job is to make sure that clearinghouses function well and don't pose risks. So those are the things we're trying to do to facilitate their ability to use these markets. But obviously, the price volatility and the declines, you know, we're talking about global forces here that affect these things.
Well, thank you. I mean, so there's nothing in additional specifically that you could point to that I could help some of the farmers in my district with some guidance in the future as they deal with these low commodity prices?
Well, again, I can't influence prices. I don't influence prices. But I guess what I would say to them is, to the extent that they are trying to hedge their risk through the commodity derivatives markets, I'm always happy to hear about their experience and whether they're facing challenges there and whether there are things we can do to make it easier for them to hedge risk, if that's what they want to do. Some businesses don't want to do that, and I'm not counseling people to do it or not do it. I'm just saying, if that's what they're choosing to do and they're running into issues, we're always happy to hear about that.
Okay, I really appreciate it. Thank you, and I yield back my time, Mr. Chairman.
Chairman ladies, back. Mr. Newhouse, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for being with us this morning. Chairman Mossad, my very first Codell was to Chicago, included the CFTC visit, and appreciate the hospitality there. Just wanted to ask a couple of questions. In December of last year, the CFTC finalized rules on margins for non-cleared cross-border swaps, and we appreciate that this rule provides a greater flexibility for swap participants than what the potential alternative rules could have, but it seems to conflict heavily with guidance that was issued back in 2013. Could you, in the areas where there is rule and between the, excuse me, conflict between the rule and the guidance, how would you encourage market participants to respond? And what have you done? What steps have you taken to help clarify any confusion that this creates?
Sure. Thank you, Congressman, for the question. I believe you're referring to the cross-border application of the margin rule, of the rule on margin for uncleared swaps. We have not yet finalized that part of the rule. What we finalized in December was what we call the base rule. We're doing a separate rulemaking on the cross-border application of it, and we do hope to take that part up for finalization very soon. The issue there was that the guidance that you're referring to was general guidance put out with respect to cross-border issues across the board, not just margin, but a lot of issues. When it came to the margin rule, we looked at being consistent with the guidance, but that would have made us inconsistent with what the bank regulators were doing. And so we have been thinking a lot about, well, how do we proceed here? The guidance stated very clearly that it was just general guidance, and the commission, when it did particular rules, might do something different. And so we put out a proposal that said to everybody to get comment. We said, "Well, we could comply with the guidance. It would look like this if we did. We could comply with the, or we could be consistent with what the bank regulators are doing in this very same issue," because they have responsibilities too, "and it would look like this. Or we could do something that we kind of termed in-between the two." So we invited comment on that, invited industry comment. We got a lot of comment. We're going through that now, and we'll make a determination as to what to do. And that, to me, that's the best way forward, to try to be as transparent as possible, to say, "Look, we could make it consistent with the guidance. We could make it consistent with these other rules that are coming down the pike. We could do something in-between, or maybe there's another alternative." So that's what we're looking at.
I appreciate that. As you know, the report accompanying the Consolidated Appropriations Act of 2016 directs the CFTC to issue a rule setting the swap dealer de minimis level at $8 billion or higher no later than 60 days after passage. Mr. Chairman, does the CFTC intend to comply with Congress instructions?
Well, we certainly take those instructions seriously, and we're keeping them in mind. What we are doing is, you know, I felt, I felt we needed to have a study of this rule to understand what the implications were, because there wasn't really data available before. So that's why we have been doing the study and getting input. We've gotten input from people in Congress on this, and we're looking at all that input, and we'll come out with a final report, and that will enable the commission to then decide what it should do.
Do you anticipate an interim final rule?
We haven't made a decision on that. I want to talk to my fellow commissioners and see what their thoughts are on what action, if any, we should take.
Appreciate that. Again, welcome, and thank you for being here. I yield back, Mr. Chairman.
Chairman yields back. Mr. Kelly, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Chairman, for being here. Going back and following up with Representative Scott's question, despite receiving $35 million increase in your FY 2015 appropriation relative to 2014, you repeatedly asked for increased funding for the agency. Your FY 2016 appropriation was kept at the same level at 2015. While we all would like to have more resources or more funds at our disposal, that's often not possible, especially in the world that we live in, and we must tighten our belts instead. Shifting resources to meet the most pressing need, prioritizing determining what needs the most fund, could you please tell me what steps the CFTC has undertaken to tighten its belt, looking to see where funds may not be put to their best use and reallocating those funds to the priorities that you choose as the chairman?
Absolutely, Congressman, and I agree with you that we do have to prioritize. You know, one of the key things we've done is we have worked with the National Futures Association, the NFA, which is our main self-regulatory organization, to see what further activities they could engage in that aren't necessarily the core things that we need to focus our resources on. And so, for example, we've asked them to take on greater responsibility with respect to examinations of swap dealers and the permanent registration process for swap dealers. And there are other areas where we're asking them to step up and do more. We're also, we are trying to prioritize our own issues, and, you know, it's very hard because so many of these things I would like to be acting on concurrently, whether it's the data issues or the, you know, the end-user concerns. But we are having to do that. We've had to delay doing certain improvements to our IT systems, which I'd rather not delay, but we've had to, you know, postpone some of those. So, you know, I, we're always focused on trying to prioritize and make the best use of the resources we have, but I do believe that, given the scope of this agency's responsibilities, that it is critical to increase that budget.
And on another line, as you're aware, in the current form, Regulation Automated Training, Reg AT, will permit the CFTC and the DOJ access without a subpoena to highly proprietary source codes by market participants. The commissioner, many market participants, have expressed concern with the CFTC's ability to safeguard this highly valuable and sensitive information. How does or how will the CFTC guarantee that any outside contractors would safeguard these irreplaceable trade secrets, and how would the agency know if any proprietary source code was in fact stolen?
Excellent question, Congressman. So what we're talking about is what we call the source code for how an algorithmic trading strategy would work. And if you have a situation in the market where an algorithm runs amok, and we've seen those, whether it was night trading or some other things, you need to be able to go back in and reconstruct what happened, and the only way you can reconstruct what happened is if that source code has been preserved, meaning even if they changed the algorithm, they kept what it used to say. That's what we're after. We're just asking them to keep it, to preserve it. We're not asking them to give it to us. And we very much recognize the confidentiality concerns. We get all sorts of confidential information from market participants, and keeping it confidential is one of our utmost obligations. And with respect to source code, we're happy to work with industry participants on this to make sure there are procedures in place that are sufficient to safeguard that confidentiality. That's the last thing I want to see happen. The strength of our markets rests on their integrity and their transparency, and part of that is making sure that we preserve the confidentiality of any kind of information that we need to get access to in our compliance and enforcement capacities.
Thank you, Chairman, for being here today, and, Mr. Chairman, I yield back the balance of my time.
Chairman yields back. Mr. Allen, five minutes.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chairman Conway. First of all, I believe that all agencies and programs need to be authorized and appropriated, not the other way around. As you know, House Republicans have made many efforts to reauthorize the CFTC with some significant and much-needed reforms. I want to encourage, as you probably already heard here today, our Senate colleagues to act on this legislation, and I agree with Chairman Conway, we need to finish our work authorizing agencies and programs before we spend more taxpayer dollars. Obviously, as in all of our districts, the commodity price situation is of great concern. We have decreasing acreage being used, for example, for cotton, which is, you know, under the WTO rule is, and then now the farm bill is, there's no protection. And so is there any link to that as far as the world market price for cotton? I mean, the reduction, I mean, it looks like that, well, obviously, we've got some issues with China on cotton, but if there's this glut in the supply chain, and because we now have a situation where our folks are just taking a big hit, as the chairman said, the farm economy is down 55%, and it's going to hit us particularly hard in Georgia, which is, agriculture is our number-one industry. So is there any connection with that as far as some of our counterparts taking advantage of us because we are considered a developed nation and they are considered undeveloped nations according to the lawsuit? So what's your thinking on that?
Well, I would hope not, Congressman. I guess in terms of what our jurisdiction is, you know, it's to make sure that, say, a futures contract pertaining to cotton isn't susceptible to manipulation. You know, it's not up to us to police trade agreements, as you know, but the concerns you've raised, you know, bear on the contract design. And how is that contract designed in terms of what are the production points or the delivery points that are taken into account in calculating a futures price, and is that working well? And, you know, that is something that the clearing agencies review from time to time as market participants raise concerns about contract design, and we get involved as well. I know also, one of the clearinghouses is trying to introduce a new world cotton contract. So I'm happy to work with your staff if there are particular concerns on that contract design. We're happy to look into those.
Good, great. Well, certainly, it's, you know, we're just going to continue to reduce the number of acres that we plant in cotton, and, you know, folks can just eat so many peanuts, and of course, the farmers were fairly smart to go to peanuts and corn and some other things, but we still want to be a player in cotton, and so we're going to have to figure, we're going to have to figure that out. Also, and not sure if you've been asked to do this, but as far as a list of your current service contracts, could your committee provide that to?
I'm sorry, our current what contracts?
The current service contracts that your agency enters into as far as third-party vendors. Could you get us a list of those service contracts?
Sure, I'd be happy to check on that, Congressman.
And then also, as far as those service contracts, has your staff examined to ensure that all obligations are appropriately accounted for under the recording statutes?
Certainly, yes, we do. We take that very seriously. We take our obligations to comply very seriously.
Okay, all right, good. Well, Mr. Chairman, I yield back my time, and thank you very much for your testimony.
Chairman yields back. Mr. Davis, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, Mr. Chairman, thanks for being here. Sometimes I need a translator too to understand my colleagues from Georgia also, so, Rick, great questions.
Thank you.
I wanted to, I wanted to bring up an issue that was brought to my attention. Representatives of the futures trading industry recently took the extreme step of filing a friend-of-the-court brief in federal court. The brief asserts that they do not understand the CFT's position on attempted manipulation, and they believe the position on attempted manipulation, if accepted by the court, will cause major problems in the markets. They claim that the CFTC is attempting to recast three decades of settled law and that the CFTC is, if successful, it would upset settled trading expectations and practices. Are you aware of this brief?
I am aware of it, sir.
Are you concerned about the potential negative impact on legitimate trading when you change settled law through enforcement actions?
Well, Congressman, I guess I'd prefer not to get into the specifics of a particular case.
Well, this is more about changing settled law. That's what I'm asking about, not a specific case.
Yeah, I don't think, we're not trying to change settled law. I think our view of the law is, I think I can state it pretty basically. You can't toy with prices. Prices should be set by supply and demand.
But would you, would you? Go ahead.
Sorry, please.
I would say, would you agree on the importance that market participants have a clear understanding of what constitutes that attempted manipulation in the futures markets?
Yes, I would, and I would agree that the way we do that in this country is Congress passes a law and the courts interpret it, and that's what's going on here. But, you know, I don't think we're trying to rewrite a lot of history here, a lot of court cases. I think... passes a law and the courts interpret it, and that's what's going on here. But, you know, I don't think we're trying to rewrite a lot of history here, or a lot of court cases. I think it's before the court, or these things go before the courts, and they'll get resolved that way. But I can tell you that as far as the agency's own position, it has not changed.
Okay, well, I just want to make sure we've learned some hard lessons about the importance of our markets and their impact on our economy, and shouldn't Congress, or at least, you know, a collaborative, at least collaborative thoughtful agency rulemaking with proper notice to the marketplace, have a role in something like this that could cause, as they stated in their letter, widespread problems for our markets. So, thank you for your responses. I also, before I run out of time, I want to say I'm glad to see you got an agreement with Europe on the equivalence, because it's very vital for our US markets. The process for getting to this point seems a little flawed. From my perspective, it seems like Europe tried everything they could to make this a competitive, to make this competitive instead of a regulatory issue. And in fact, this seems like it also almost became a trade issue with Europe trying to keep the US out of its markets. What can be done to prevent European regulators from acting this way in future negotiations?
Well, I guess I would say it this way Congressman, I think--
And I know you dealt with this issue earlier, but I wasn't here, I apologize.
You know, I think both Commissioner Hill and I inherited a situation. I think we were both committed to trying to resolve it in good faith and as quickly as we could. I think the fact that we now have resolved it provides a good basis for future cooperation. I think we should be focused on, as you put it, the regulatory objective. I think we've got a lot of other work streams going on that are seeking to do that, that Europe and the US and other regulators are involved in. And so, I think our challenge is now, let's take this forward, let's focus on those work streams, and let's try not to let the, you know, try not to let these things get derailed.
Well, Mr. Chairman, thank you for your time, and in the days of multiple hearings, I will see you later. I yield back.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman yields back. Mr. DeJurely for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, a recent article in Bloomberg noted that oil markets had reached a new record for the highest number of open positions in WT oil contracts, with speculations opening almost half a million contracts through February 2nd. Given this unprecedented level of speculative activity in the oil markets, how many dollars per barrel do you think it is adding to the current price of oil?
Congressman, I don't speculate on prices, or I don't comment on prices. I guess what I would say is that we have seen a lot of volatility, obviously, in the oil market and the energy complex overall. It's obviously the product of a lot of very, very big forces of supply and demand. But, our job is to engage in surveillance to make sure there aren't people violating the law, or engaging in improper behavior, trying to manipulate prices, and we will do that to the best that we can with the resources that we have.
Thank you. Would you consider, or would you classify this as excessive speculation?
No, not at this time, no. I think, again, we've, to my knowledge, we're again witnessing an oil market which has been affected by some very large forces of supply and demand. The shale revolution has caused tremendous change in production, and particularly production in this country. We've seen changes from abroad in both what OPEC is doing and the, in Iran. So, there are a lot of very big factors affecting the oil market and affecting prices here.
Okay, but Mr. Chairman, if a record number of open contracts doesn't constitute excessive speculation, then what exactly is excessive speculation?
Well, Congress didn't define it in the law. It's up to us to do our best, and our task in that regard is to come up with a positions limits rule, as Congress has directed us to, that is supposed to be designed to prevent excessive speculation, and that's what we're trying to do. In our surveillance efforts, you know, we're focused on whether people are manipulating or attempting to manipulate price. So, that's what we'll continue to do there.
Okay, you may have answered this somewhat, but let me try again. How do we know exactly what activity the commission is trying to prevent with this proposed position limits rule, which has no definition or test for excessive speculation?
Congressman, I think we're trying to carry out the directive that Congress gave us, which was to implement position limits to limit excessive speculation while at the same time allowing for bona fide hedging. We have had position limits in agricultural commodities for many, many years, and I think most people would say they've worked well. And Congress made the decision to expand that, and that's what we're trying to do. We're going about that by looking at a number of things and listening to market participants of all types as to how we should design this rule. We're working with the exchanges on how we should design this rule. They, of course, have had position limits in place for a number of other commodities, even when it wasn't a federal limit, for years and years also. And when I talk to most participants, they agree that we should have position limits. The questions go to exactly where they should be set and making sure that they allow for bona fide hedging, and those are the things we're focused on.
Thank you for your answers. I yield back.
Chairman yields back. If he would yield--
I will yield the balance of my time to the chairman.
That law you cite, Dodd-Frank, uses the phrase "as appropriate" with respect to position limits. We did not, in fact, demand that you do that. Wouldn't it be better to let the markets themselves set those limits as opposed to the commission trying to make that happen, because we didn't tell you you had to do it?
Well, Congressman, I guess it's been our interpretation that we are supposed to do a rule here. As to exactly what the limits are, I think is the question we're working on and working to try to get right. And I will continue to do that. I've said many times over, it's more important, you know, to get this right, and we should take the time we need to get it right.
Okay, I appreciate that. Mr. Thompson, five minutes.
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman, welcome. Thanks for being here. Chairman, a couple of questions. I've read that in response to increases in capital requirements under the Basel III supplementary leverage ratio, large derivative dealers in the United States and Europe are exploring spinning off their cleared swaps desks. Do you have concerns with that possibility, and what would be the effect on the swaps market and the cost of hedging risk?
That's an excellent question Congressman, and we are watching that. There've been some articles on that recently. We don't have enough information yet to fully evaluate it, but it's something we're certainly going to keep our eyes on and talk to market participants about. The issue though, you've noted properly, the underlying issue here, I think, or at least one of them, which we're also looking at, and I've spoken about publicly, which is the effect of capital requirements on, for example, the clearing member community. And we talked about that a little bit earlier, but I'm concerned about, you know, whether we're properly balancing the objectives of strong capital requirements, which I support, but also promoting central clearing. And I have been concerned that the way some of these regulations were written could create a disincentive to clear, which would not be consistent, I think, with the objective of promoting central clearing.
Thank you. Just to follow up on that, I know that in response to a question by former Chairman Lucas regarding the SOR, you said that I'm very concerned, as you said, now that the SOR would have a significant negative impact on the clearing, and you went on to say that you spoke recently with Controller Curry and Chairman Grunberg at FDIC and as well as the Fed about this issue, and that you all agree that our staffs would get together and discuss it further. Did Controller Curry and Chairman Grunberg, Chair Yellen, or any of their staff ever take the time to sit down with you or your staff to discuss the issue further? And if so, how'd that go?
Yep, we have discussed it. They have a different view right now. They are, I think, well, I don't want to speak for them individually. I will just say that I think there are different views here. There's still discussion going on. You know, I think they have the objective of making sure there are strong capital requirements, and they believe the leverage ratio should not be, as they put it, "risk-based," and therefore shouldn't take into account, for example, the margin posted at the clearing house. I'm concerned that, you know, we really should be thinking about that margin. I mean, there's $250 billion of margin held at our primary clearing houses for all these cleared trades. That's a lot of margin to ignore. So, you know, I know there's also international, there's an international work going on looking at this. So, we'll continue to engage, but there are differences of opinion.
Now, I have seen recently where the Basel Committee is considering reviewing its position on the issue. What does that mean for the US SOR roles? And if the Basel Committee fixes this issue, will the issue be settled there, or will our US regulators have to act?
That's a good question. My understanding, and I'm not a member of the Basel Committee, and I don't know exactly what they're going to do, I've heard rumors, is they could do something, but our regulators would still have to act. Obviously, they have the jurisdiction here. But I think, you know, it's helpful to have this kind of discussion about it. I will continue to be available and to raise it. We're continuing to talk to clearing members about it. I think it's helpful if the clearing member industry comes up with more data to show what effects they think it's having. Thank you.
Well, thank you Chairman, and Chairman, I yield back.
Chairman yields back. Mr. Chairman, thank you for being here today. I got a couple of other questions. You know, this, your job and a lot of other regulators, all these things that have been done under the guise of Dodd-Frank, and a lot of money spent in that regard. Stepping back away from it and trying to see, does it actually work, and are we going to be able to give a heads up in terms of some sort of monstrous systemic risk that would replicate the damage done in 2008? A lot of press reporting about the stresses on European banks, and you talked earlier about interconnecting this and being able to do the things that you're supposed to do. I've got the enforcement part on a one-on-one basis, that's really important, to saying the integrity that's going on, but overall, FSOC efforts and everything that's in place, can you walk us through your role at FSOC? Do you prepare written reports and other data to put into that scheme, whatever it is? And not that those would be public, obviously, because of the sensitivity of it, but I'm just trying to see, we got a lot invested in this whole effort, collectively, a lot, the folks on the compliance side, as well as your team and taxpayers. Are we in a position to give the world a heads up if a coming wreck is imminent in this, based on everything we've done?
Well, excellent question, Mr. Chairman. I think we're in a much better position today. That's not to say we'll predict everything, right? It's always challenging, because, you know, if there's another problem, it may come from a direction that we haven't anticipated. But I think bringing all the regulators together through FSOC is an enormously important action that we've taken, because it does allow all of us to share ideas and information and perspectives, and at least minimize the risk that because of the various functional groupings of regulators, or even silos, that we kind of miss something that, you know, falls between jurisdictions. So, I think it helps enormously in that respect.
So, your contribution to that, would it be written? Do you just go there and talk, or is you actually, your team put together reports that feed into the system? And if so, how often does that happen?
It varies Congressman. We, Mr. Chairman, we do some of both. Yesterday, we were making a presentation with others on clearinghouse issues to some of the other staff. My staff made a presentation when we had the October 15th volatility in the Treasury markets. Because we had data on the futures market, which doesn't really exist on the cash Treasuries market, we were able to put together a presentation for the full FSOC, for the principles, when we made that presentation. We're going to make a presentation on our regulation FT. So, sometimes we do formal presentations, sometimes we comment on other presentations that are made, sometimes it's just a discussion. We comment on drafts of reports, so it's all of those things.
All right. Well, given the nature of that and the sensitivity of the data, would you agree to confidential briefing for the ranking member and I, or members, to get a better sense of what that looks like?
Certainly.
Okay. A couple of nits and nats. Office of the Chief Economist, relatively small now versus what it might have been in the past, and the role that you see the chief economist playing in the overall surveillance and trying to look and get these kind of, you know, forward-looking heads-ups that is a part of that job, how do you see that office going?
Extremely important, in fact. In our budget, the percentage-wise, in terms of staff, that's the highest increase. I'm trying to increase that office by 50%. And that's not the only economists we have, though. We also have economists in other divisions. But it's extremely important to expand our economists.
The lease issue that we've talked about, the excess space, I know that you wouldn't necessarily get benefit to your budget if you were to be able to sublease that or to try to minimize the impact. What are the restrictions for being able to do that, and can you see a public relations plus on your side in that those resources would come back to the taxpayer in effect if you did that by being able to minimize the impact that excess office space is having? What are the technical restrictions for allowing you to take a business-like approach? I mean, if you were in business for yourself, you'd have done something rather than paying millions of dollars.
Absolutely. Mr. Chairman, I would be happy to sublease it and turn the money over to the US Treasury if I could do that. The restriction, as I understand it, is this. We can only sublease under the law if it's to someone who is, I think, and I'm not going to get the phrase right, I'll ask our lawyers so I get the exact phrase, but they have to be furthering our regulatory mission and objectives.
So, this is something that you'd be willing to work with us on if we can figure out how--
Certainly, certainly.
--address, because this can't be the only agency that has excess space.
Congressman, you know, to give you an example, you know, we collected $2.8 billion in enforcement fines. All that goes back to the Treasury, so, you know, we're not--
Well, yeah, I got that, but you know what I'm saying? You're asking for more resources, and you've got this, you know, albatross hanging around your neck of excess office space. It's easy for others to say, "Well, you're not using them." Anyway, let's work together, try to figure out how we can loosen that up so that you can, in fact, get a better, you know, arrangement for the taxpayers. Ms. Custer, did you have questions?
Just a very quick one, if you have one minute. Thank you very much, and I apologize for the delay. I've been in another committee, but welcome--
Thank you.
--to the Ed Committee. I understand that there was an announcement this morning about the EU and the CFTC reaching an agreement on equivalence, which is great news. My question is, how can we ensure that these efforts will not inhibit our ability to safeguard the markets? So, in other words, it's great news that we've reached an agreement. Is that going to be sufficient, and do you have any concerns going forward about safeguarding markets?
Oh, yes Congressman, and thank you for the question. I think it's very, very consistent with those efforts. In fact, it helps, it furthers those efforts. One of the things that was very important to me in this agreement was making sure we recognize that these very large clearing houses that operate cross-border, that we need to work together with regulators in other parts of the world on the oversight, on the supervision. We shouldn't just be saying, "Well, if it's on your soil, you, you know, you take care of it, and we don't have to worry." And so, that's why we want to continue to get information about, you know, what's going on at a European clearing house. Now, we'll work. We have a very excellent relationship with the Bank of England, and with ESMA, and with the German regulators, and we will continue to work with them. But in this day and age, having regulators cooperate in the oversight of these very, very large clearing houses is a very high priority.
Great, thank you, and hopefully you'll report back, and I'm sure Mr. Conaway will be all over it. Thank you very much. Thank you.
But Chairman, again, thank you for being here today. I want to get it on the record one more time how responsive your team was with respect to the leases issue and our inquiries, and thank you for that. From time to time, there are agencies out there that aren't quite as forthcoming, and particularly on the issue where you're trying to clean up somebody else's mess kind of things, but I appreciate that. We, you know, with the economies in the world going bad, our own economy--
We, you know, with the economies in the world going bad, our own economy only grew at seven-tenths of a percent last year. We've got ag income down 55% in over two years, the worst impacts, worst drop since 1919, 1920, '21 timeframe. There are stresses in the mix and I'm hoping that this overall effort, we, some of it agreed with, some of it didn't agree with, will pay some dividends in terms of trying to let FSOC do its job and trying to see what might be up front of us and try to rein some of those things that are actually causing it as opposed to just the overall impact that economies have on growing and shrinking. So, again, thank you, Chairman, for being here. And before, I'll say, other rules of committee, to the record of today's hearing, where we remain open for 10 calendar days to receive additional material, supplementary written responses from the witnesses to any question posed by a member, this hearing of the Committee on Agriculture is adjourned.
Thank you.